Green light. Green light. Green light.
We're ready. Dana?
Okay, we would like to start our meeting tonight. This is the Morgan City Council, June tenth, twenty twenty five. And we appreciate a few of you being here with us today. We're gonna have a special treat. Instead of the pledge of allegiance, we're gonna have Briggs sing us the Star Spangled Banner. So if you'd like to come up here, Briggs, the front, and we're gonna stand and put our hand over our heart. Good, right there, buddy.
Four, six, and you see, by the dawn's eye, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleam, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the peril was spied, for the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rockets' red glare, the bombs bursting in gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the and the home of the brave?
Good job.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Good job.
I could sing that high sixteen years ago.
That was awesome.
So, Rick, is Maxine Long your grandma? Right?
Yeah. She's my mom.
And what is your name?
Katie, thank you, then. Kristen was, um, not Shantel. What's your daughter's name?
Danielle?
Danielle.
Danielle and Kristen were the same age, right? Yeah, 'cause my wife used to work with your mom over there.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
So Briggs, I just want you to know something. There's not very many people here, which is a shame, there never is. Uh, but what you just did tonight, do you believe in angels? There's, there's a lot of angels who put down a lot of sacrifice for that flag. And you just made them proud. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, good job.
You, you can grab a few of them.
No, it's been. Don't, don't take them.
We don't know how long we're gonna be here.
It may be here a while.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was awesome.
I very well see you again at the event, hopefully I do.
Yeah, we're gonna get some big events going. We'll have you started off, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Jeffrey, would you mind giving us a prayer?
You bet. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this beautiful summer day here in the Morgan Valley, and we're grateful to be here in the Morgan City office chambers to be able to discuss and look over and, and talk about the affairs of, of Morgan City. Help us to follow thy guidance and thy promptings to know what's best for the citizens today and prepare this town and this city for the future, so it'll continue to bless the lives of the people that live here for generations to come. Heavenly Father, we're grateful for those that have sacrificed so much for our behalf and our blessings and that will, so that we can have the type of life that we do. Help us to strive, to make life better for everyone that we come in contact with. We'll be able to be good examples and, and be patient and understanding to meet the needs of, of everyone. We're grateful again for all that thou has blessed us with, especially for this valley, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, I'll look for an approval of the meeting's agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and an approval of tonight's meetings. Not meetings, meeting. And I'll look for a motion and, and a second on the minutes of the city council meeting, May thirteenth, twenty twenty five, and the warrants.
Before we get there, Mayor, we need to make one change to that. On May thirteenth, I was not here. I was in
Oh, that's right.
Yellowstone.
Yeah.
So it, it has me present, and I think there was a the vote was five, I isn't, I was not here for any of that, so.
And then, Mayor?
All right.
We had a, a motion and a second on the approval to the meeting agenda.
We need to hold on that.
Oh, sorry. Let's back up to item C. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
Okay. Well, that one's unanimous. So are we prepared to make the changes on that? A motion with the changes and get a second?
The change is being that Jeffrey wasn't here.
Mm-hmm.
Does that take care of it, I guess?
I, I think so.
Okay.
And then the warrants also from five nine twenty-five to six six twenty-five.
I'll make a, a, a motion to approve of the minutes of the city council meeting, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, with the changes as noted by Jeffrey, and also to accept the warrants of five nine twenty-five to six six twenty-five. I will make that motion.
I will second that motion, Mayor.
But I would like to have some discussion.
Okay.
Uh, before we make the vote. Uh, I have a question. Uh, Ty, just refresh my memory on the, uh, on the invoice register. Just for my curiosity. I gotta find it here real quick. I was looking at it a while ago. K, is it KPS? Is that the? Yeah, KPS Services, so equipment and maintenance and the Island Road Well and expenses and was it maintenance on the cemetery station, Pompeii? What, what were those two projects?
One was the Island Road Well went, went out.
Okay.
I had to put a new pump in there. Um, the other one was for the park. Let me see.
Says the cemetery station, Pompeii.
Oh, yeah.
The island well, it was, it was a new pump that we had to replace.
Well, it's the, um, SCADA, SCADA with all the equipment. So after the pump got replaced, and we've been working on the cemetery SCADA system, but it includes a bunch of parts, too. It's not just service. So when the pump went down, it fried everything.
But we did, but we had to put new pumps in.
Yeah.
And both.
The other, yeah, the other one we've been working on for quite a while, and finally the cemetery one, so that's the the pump in our own tank in order to run the sprinkler system. So it's still almost done.
Okay.
Yeah.
Curious as to why they were like so.
Yeah.
I hope they were both fairly expensive.
Yeah, they were expensive. And the cemetery one's over a longer period of time than it looks like. We just got the invoice at the same time. The other one went, like, it was like a three-week turnaround, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just curious about it, so. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Janet, that's unanimous. And welcome. Okay. Item three, citizen comments. And we, we have a very good one tonight, and so if you'd like to come to the, that little podium there and push that green button, or it's red now, but push the button, it'll turn green.
Briggs, I'm not gonna sing. Couldn't follow that. Um, thank you to Mayor Gale for inviting me tonight to speak on a matter that's been eating at me ever since February, when I moved into the Riverside Apartments across from the Riverside Park. Um, I'm new to, new to the county, new to Morgan City. I'm out of Salt Lake, and, um, I ha, I have a, a, I think a valid concern about the traffic flow and the speed at which they flow. I'm not an expert in traffic flow, but I've been driving longer than I'd like to admit, and, and it's, it's very clear, and I've not met one parent who wouldn't agree with me tonight, what I'm saying. I'd hope for some support, but it was short notice last night. I got notice of this hearing. So I'm, I'm speaking specifically about one twenty-five north that runs from Commercial Street down past the river, past the park and the river, and it goes as far as the four-way stop sign down by the high, at the south end of the high school. I think you're probably, I don't have to tell you, but I wanna make sure you understand. It, it goes in down in, at the south end, it goes into, uh, Circle Drive. Um, they, they start their speeding there. The minute they come out of, um, from the south, they come out of, uh, that one hundred, I believe it is, one hundred south, and it goes all the way, they'll speed all the way down to Commercial and vice versa. It works the same way with Commercial, and I'm out there quite frequently, all out, not admittedly in the mornings, um, early mornings, but I, I'm there ten AM at different times throughout the day, all the way up until two and three in the morning, 'cause I don't sleep well. Um, I, I don't have a radar gun, but I can tell you they're exceeding forty miles an hour in some cases. I think they're over forty-five in some cases. And at one seventy-seven, seventy-nine point, which is directly across from the Riverside Apartments, I'm sure you all know Matt Wilson's two apartment buildings he, he built there. Um, it, it, it goes down to twenty. Nobody, virtually nobody pays attention to the reduction in that speed at twenty from twenty-five, which is twenty-five, their first sign and only sign I could find, to be honest with you, was down by the little dance hall and laundry mat there on the, on the north end of the driveway, the drive. Um, they, they ignore the twenty-five. They're exceeding the speed limit all the way through, and they don't slow down for the twenty, which is only fifty, sixty feet max from crosswalks and the bridge. And it's bad enough coming, traffic coming north to south, but when you travel south to north, it's a lower approach to that bridge, and they don't even, you can't, I know they know it's there, but they can't see the crosswalks. They don't have the visibility unless they're in a large jacked-up truck to see that, those crosswalks on the other side of the bridge. There are no markings that indicate a crosswalk, and, um, that is no markings on that side of the south side of the bridge. On the north side of the bridge, they ignore the speed limit, they travel, it, it's everything from teenagers to seventy-year-olds and maybe older. I don't know. Um, you, you've got a reference there. I, I asked the police department. I don't have any documents to support any of this. I'll just proffer to you that I have no objective, no reason for me to lie. Um, it's dangerous. And what makes this, I know that every county in the, in the, probably the nation, certainly the state, has speeders on most every street within their county, but this is a special circumstances because the park is an attractive nuisance, as defined by, I think you all know law. It's not a nuisance at all, but it's an attractive nuisance under the definition in law. Drivers have an obligation, if you're standing, another matter of law, real quick, if you're standing at the crosswalk wishing to cross or planning to cross either side, drivers have an obligation to stop and allow you to do so. They don't have, you don't have to wait for them. And I'll tell you, the, the sharpest ones are the little kids on bicycles or walking that go back and forth between one side of the street, the west side of the street or the east side of the street where the park, excuse me, west side of the street where the park is. And those, those kids are doing the right thing. They're stopping at the crosswalks and they wait, and they wait, and I've seen traffic flying past them at thirty and forty miles an hour, clearly over the twenty, but also exceeding even the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. And I think you're familiar, it's a green sign that, kind of a greenish sign that says twenty. That applies all the way down past the schools. And I can't find another sign that says twenty-five unless you get into the, the street, the block immediately after the four-way stop. Those numbers surprised me. I thought they would be, if I had the power to write citations, that bottom number would be three or four hundred. Yeah, yeah, I know. And I have to tell you, the sheriff's office, specifically, um, Ryan, um, Watkins and Sergeant Tillot, if I'm saying that right, I know I haven't met Sergeant Tillot, but they've been very helpful. And last week I called, and I got a ten-minute response. I spoke with a nice young deputy, female deputy, didn't catch her name, but shh, ten minutes later they were out there, and they were patrolling and they were driving. There, there was not a lot of kids in the park, but baseball this time of night is loaded with kids that aren't on the field, but their siblings are all running around the perimeter, and they're gonna, there's gonna be a problem, and I, 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 I hope not. I hope I'm wrong before something's done, but I know that something happened. I heard yesterday something terrible happened in, uh, Mallen Green, was it?
Yeah.
You, you folks, I, I don't follow social media, so I don't know what the circumstances were. I do know a little girl was injured or worse. I don't. You, well, I'll leave it up to you to decide on that, but I'm a, I'm, I had an experience, a terrible experience in Salt Lake County by Cottonwood High School where I lived. I don't wanna witness that again. I don't wanna see, it was like a war zone. It looked horrendous just to see after the fact, before the police were even there and covered the bodies up. I don't wanna see a five-year-old girl and her father, twenty-nine-year-old father, killed or injured, for that matter. The, the, the sheriff's office did let the resource officer at the school know, and I need to tell you, to be fair, the high school kids slowed down. They made some changes, and I think they circulated a memorandum or an email of some kind that pointed out the liability to these parents, excuse me, to the parents. It's, they're liable. Those kids are under eighteen. They're gonna lose everything if some tragedies happen. And, um, the adults that are coming through there have their phone on the steering wheel, reading it. I've witnessed that countless times. I can't, I couldn't keep track. I'm not here to point the finger at any one individual, or I try to identify them by vehicle and their description, but they would know who they are. If they were sitting here, they would know. And I think that they're, they're being negligent just by not slowing down for those crosswalks, not yielding to the children who are doing their part. Um, and I, and I, I'm just trying to avoid what could be a tragic accident. Mayor, you asked me on the phone call what I thought could be done. I think there are people that know a lot more about traffic flow and control than I do, but there are absolutely zero signs that indicate crosswalks on the south side of that bridge. At what I call Crowther Corner, Dr. Crowther's Corner, they need to be something there in advance at that south end of the bridge when they're traveling northbound to bring attention to the crosswalk, slow them down. And quite frankly, I think you need another, there needs to be at least one more twenty-mile-an-hour sign. Flashing lights might not be a bad idea. I understand everything's a budgetary concern, and I, the limitations, you may have to look to the county or the state to say, kick in some money, and I'm not trying to direct you. I'm trying to just point out my concerns. I, I, I'm not an expert in traffic flow. I don't wanna kid you.
We appreciate your concerns. We appreciate you being willing to vocalize it in this meeting, and, uh, I think we all live in sort of different areas of the city, and it's, it's a citywide problem.
Yeah. Citywide? Oh, no doubt. But you have a special circumstance with that park. Three schools, an LDS ward house, that twenty-four-unit complex, there's a lot of children we're talking about, and they come from around the neighborhood still.
Yeah.
When, when we were looking at that apartment complex there, when we were discussing that before we just, one of the conversations was exactly that, that we need to, that's a, that's a area that we really need to monitor because of children crossing from the apartment over to the park. And so we, we, that was a, a topic of conversation that we had at the time, so realizing there probably be a lot of young kids in those apartments that might wanna go access the park, so, so it's a, you know, it's, it's kind of a bit of a high-risk area, if you want.
Yep.
I'd only say that we can't rewrite the book on that. It's there. And, and, and not only that, but the children really are doing the right thing. I'm worried about the one that's gonna squirt out to catch a, get his baseball while he's waiting to play the next game, or younger children, three and four years old, who are playing and not watching the game. And if somebody loses control on that roadway, they're gonna end up right down there with the moms, dads, grandmas, and grandpas that are just trying to watch a baseball game with their children.
On that being.
So it doesn't have to be the, and, and to be honest, before it moved out, and it's, there's less, the, the littlest ones are accompanied by their parents, but when they hit four, five, six, they start to squirt out, and you don't know always that your kid's trying to get over there to that park 'cause of the splash pad. There's a lot of attraction over there for these kids, and it's a wonderful park.
A park, a lot of things.
Yep.
What, what, I'm sorry?
I said the skate parks over there, the splash pad, there's a lot of things.
Yeah, yeah. And it, it's fantastic park you built there. Congratulations, 'cause you nailed it. It's one of the better ones I've seen for these kids, but that's my feeling, and I wish somebody else would have been here to second my
Amen.
my statements. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer, but.
Well, we, uh, we appreciate your concerns. We appreciate what you've suggested, and it, it will be, um, an item that we will look at and, uh, see what we can improve.
Does you, you not have any responsibility on any of these roads?
Not that one.
Skate Street.
This one right here, they do, but.
And, and what about the county? Just for my own? No? Okay. Well, there's gotta be a well you can dip in, I would think, if you need to get the resources. Is, I don't, city manager may know more about finances than I'll ever, no, but I appreciate you hearing me out.
Yeah, thank you.
For the time.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for your.
Appreciate your concern.
That's all they are. It's, this isn't for me. This is for the children, really.
Thank, thank you very much. Did you wanna make a public comment?
But on that same street, we have made improvements. We're not seeing the cars parked on the sidewalk on that west side like they were. Or is it still pretty bad?
Better.
It's better. It's better, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I have a grandson playing right now, and
Better.
It's busy, and it's.
It has been, yeah, it was really bad there for a long time. You couldn't even walk down the sidewalk on that side of the street, but.
We painted that white line there, and it I think had some effect, but, yeah, anyway. I think had some effect, but yeah, anyway.
Okay, so we'll make a note of that and maybe look for a future discussion. Okay. Well, I'm disappointed that you didn't want to come up and talk.
Talk about the traffic down the island road. Right by our houses.
My name's Laura M. McGuire. I think the speed limit in the city is an overall problem. It happens everywhere. You know, it's like, what do you do to improve it? I don't know.
You ought to live on the north side with big trucks pulling pups going fifty miles an hour.
We were just in here tonight and I said, oh, that, that kid on that motorcycle's going real fast. I don't know. My husband.
So you have a problem on Island Road too?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have, we have a problem on Island Road too.
Is that where you live in Stell?
Yes. Yeah, on the island road. I'm the last house in the city limits, if you wanted to know. This is my husband, Brian, when that gentleman was speaking, he said, I would rather have more stop signs than a speed bump. That's what he said. Yeah, but also I did have a question when he was speaking. Isn't twenty miles an hour a school zone speed limit? Like, I don't think that's a city street speed limit. That's just like a school zone. Which is generally during school hours, right?
I think with that twenty mile an hour speed limit sign is it's almost, almost school, right?
I was always under the impression of what she said.
It's just. I didn't think it was.
State Street, the flash.
Is it twenty all the time? That's actually knowledge to me. I mean, I grew up here and went to school here and I was like, oh, is it all the time?
Council was knowledge to me.
Maybe we should make those orange or something. Oh, they're yellow. I think I should sit down.
But. Thank you.
I guess as we're moving on to.
But I, hold on.
Arts and stuff with the speed site, I have had several people ask me, what are we doing in the city with the e-bikes flying down the sidewalks? Flying, it's one of those that when they hit and come through that aren't stopping, that are on the sidewalks. And we can't be the only city that are seeing those. And some of those are fast.
Is there such a thing now as an electric dirt bike?
Yeah.
Yes.
No.
But, you know, that's.
What I'm seeing is some of these. Yeah.
Dirt bike looking things are fast. And I don't know what other cities, other places are doing.
See, now you know what you're getting into here, mayor.
I'm green.
See, I haven't said much yet.
But is there a way you could do some type of city campaign or like initiative without having to spend a lot of money on signs and stuff? Just like, hey, awareness to speed limits throughout the city, some type of, I don't know, if you could do something just to remind people, we, some type of thing without like, we need to get a bunch more signs or put in speed bumps or do a stop sign, do some type of. You could come up with something creative, some type of just like, put it on your marquee. I love all the things going on on the marquee. And that girl did just get hit in Mountain Green. I don't know the circumstances of that, but anyway, just some type of something that's budget friendly, but also brings awareness to maybe help people.
So are you on social media?
Am I? Just sometimes a little bit.
It's a good place to campaign.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Wait, what are we talking about now?
You, you could, you could mention maybe one of your soapboxes would be speed limits and the safety and.
Yeah, just something, I mean.
That's just one area. I'm not saying that, that we have something, you know, from, from the city end of things, uh. But, yeah.
I actually over there where the, um, the crosswalk was improved, I noticed that. I think it's, yeah, like you painted it, right? Yeah, like you said, it was painted, right?
By the school, the middle school, right?
Yeah. The stop signs now have like red on them and I don't know. I'm gonna sit down again. But anyway, just an idea, maybe some type of campaign without spending a whole bunch of money.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I apologize. You could have talked while you were sitting.
We need to record it though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would you like to take the microphone with you?
They are battery powered.
I had mine off.
Thank you for the comments and.
Did you have something?
Oh, it'd just be nice if, uh, yeah, we gotta do something. I mean, it's just, and I, I think it's probably countywide. I mean, it's just, I think it's just everywhere. It's not just e-bikes here. It's e-bikes everywhere and.
It's a question in regard to this subject. So a few years ago, what we did is we contracted with the county. And we con- we've contracted for one officer on the sheriff's department to be assigned to work Morgan City. We pay for, we pay for one officer, Morgan City. I guess my question is, is, is that happening? Are we getting eight hours of city patrol? And I'm not, and I don't want the answer to that.
I've actually talked to him.
The, the thing, the thing I wish that, that we could have is, is a, a log of that time.
I wouldn't even mind if the sheriff met with us once in a while and just discussed, or just gave us a little bit of an update on what's going on. Because quite frankly, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna open up a can of worms here. Quite frankly, I'm not sure I ever see one of our law enforcement individuals patrolling the city much. Maybe they are. I'm just saying, I just, I'm just not seeing it a whole lot, but perhaps I'm wrong.
I think there's a lot of areas that we have to help them draw attention to, different. But for one car to cover the whole city and be visible the whole time, I, I do feel like, um, since, just to call one out, I think Meg does a great job and is really, really stepped up on our crosswalk situation out here on, on State Street. And around the schools, like I've seen, I've seen people pulled over on Young Street, down, down past the school and just high traffic areas, but what, uh, you know, I, I didn't come prepared to make anything, but what comes to mind to me is to maybe renegotiate that contract and have a couple of blitzs weekends where we say, how many people do you have on shift and, and we, can we go into neighborhoods and and actually write some, or at least pull over, you know what I mean? That.
No more presence.
Yeah, this, it doesn't, it doesn't take much to have people.
Reminders.
Reminders, but more so than signs or, or.
Like three or four tickets in the word.
Well, I sure feel like that would help on the island road. I mean, it wouldn't take too long for those guys to sit there and I, I'm telling you, if they did just a speed blitz for just an afternoon, I bet you they'd drag twenty-five tickets, you know?
Another thing we've done is there's a, a digital sign that reminds people of the speed that they're going. And we could deploy that in, uh, in different. Well, we could put it in different places all the time instead of like just bring it out when there's a, a problem. So there's, there's a couple of things we could do.
I mean, for me personally, they work pretty well when I see one of those.
When they flash and tell you you're over.
We slow down.
Yeah, I think they're pretty effective. And that's something we could put on the new, what, sign there about the speed limit in the city and I mean, we have, we have watch for workers and caution that way, but yeah, there's, there's some things that this will help.
It's just the culture, the way people drive in Morgan. We, every time we do a, a project, a road project and we try and figure out parking, nobody parks where they're supposed to park. Nobody believes. Right? So it's like, we, we improve intersections knowing that, uh, pedestrians don't have the right of way. Uh, we, we, every improvement we make it, we get kicked back. Like, what do you mean I can't park on the street? Right? Or whatever it is. And so we try our best, but I was going down Young Street where there was a, a full truck that drove over the curb, through the rocks, over the sidewalk, just to get a little parking spot next to the ballfield parked under the power line, under the guy wire. And then when I was walking by, was backing out all the way into the street and you know, you're just like, how important is the extra ten feet? Or, or twenty feet, but that's just, well, we, we feel it as city staff, like, but I think that there's more we can do. We'll, we'll just organize a little thing with the sheriff's department, but I do believe we are getting the eight hours.
So you're, 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 we're giving forty hours a week from one officer?
Yeah, and they know who, and they know who's assigned and they know who's on shift.
Okay.
And more than that is, is when the other officers are countywide, a lot of times they're here at the same time. So we, we get more than one dedicated officer because they usually buddy up and and, and they're here, right? So they've been out and they come back to the headquarters, so we, we have a pretty good law enforcement.
Well, I think, you know.
Presence.
Being part of Morgan City is part of Morgan County, so we are entitled to some basic law enforcement service in addition to our.
Yep. But I see them patrol State Street quite often. When you get off the freeway, um, over there by seven eleven, there's.
I've walked this city a lot and I see a lot of places I'd like a sign, you know? Why people over there at Wilkinson Complex and that little parking spot where that little roundabout walkway goes? Why they feel the need to pull up and park on that walkway just drives me crazy. You know, they don't, they pull right up on the co- on the asphalt walkway and park there for a soccer game or.
Yeah, I was.
And you're thinking, come on people, it's a walkway. It's not a parking lot for.
And our, I was on a walk and there was a car parked on the road right next to the sign that said, no on-street parking. It wasn't like even in between signs. It was like, here, let me park under this. I know. But anyway, the, I, I think just the presence and, and having a couple bl- as far as a campaign, like having a, a couple blitz days, so, so they're kind of random, but that would happen. Just up the, up the visibility and especially when someone sees somebody else getting pulled over. It's a good reminder and a sign or.
News travels fast.
Yeah, well, I've been preaching to the choir with my grandkids about it for quite a while and if you, what's the word? Not, if you nag on them enough and you bring it up enough, then maybe it'll get into their head. And I think that's what, what, kind of what we need to sort of do is, is make a push and.
You know, what they really get in their head is if they get a ticket.
Yeah. So, good discussion. Okay, let's move on to item six. Uh, city council, have you got anything that we need to hear and report? Tony?
Well, I've been on a bit of a soapbox already, so I guess I can just, well, continue here. So I've had a couple of people talk to me about this and I've got to tell you straight out, I totally agree with them. And, and it has to do with what's in front of our hotel. And I totally agree with these people. They say you pull into Morgan, we spent a lot of time and effort on Commercial Street trying to beautify it. And you pull into Morgan and you turn on Commercial Street and you come to the top of the hill, what is the first thing you see? You see the Comfort Inn, which I hope is successful, but what, but what is out in front of it is a disgrace. So I've had people come up to me and say, hey, you know, I've had complaints to the city about my yard. That's great, but why don't you guys have to do something when it comes to some commercial property? And I don't have an answer for them other than, you know what, I totally agree with you, by the way. So, I mean, if I didn't know Morgan City and I was traveling and I came out and I saw Comfort Inn and I pulled off and I thought, well, maybe I'll go stay discomforted. And I pulled in front of that Comfort Inn and I saw what was out in front of that Comfort Inn, I swear to you, I probably would turn around and drive off and go somewhere else. Just because of the way, the, the, the way it looks. Now, that's just me, but I've had some other people mention it as much. It's, it's, you know, isn't, is there nothing we can do to make that look better?
You do voter enforcement?
Yeah. Because I think these people have a good point. It just, it does not look becoming. It certainly doesn't look very professional. You know, I, 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 I think people may look at that and think that the exterior and the way it looks might speak of how the hotel itself is is, is managed or what it looks like. And that may not be fair, but anyway, that's my, that's my soapboxes. And I don't know if you guys agree with that or not, but it just looks bad. And it's the entrance to our Commercial Street.
Yeah, that's true. Good point. I think it's valid.
Hopefully, uh, at least half of that eyesore will develop. At least there's a sign there. There might be something happening, but what do I think is three years to get McDonald's with all the rumors?
I mean, we're looking at it, we're looking at the plaza, we're looking at doing some really nice upgrades and fixing it up and making it look nice. And that just looks so out of place.
We've, uh.
Good point.
The, the, uh, entrance off the freeway, I've had a lot of people just say, man, that really looks good with the flag and stuff. And we've done all that work and that is a good point. You turn that corner and it's like, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, anyway.
And I don't know if down across from shirts to a tee, they did come out two Sunday mornings ago. And whacked all that nasty down.
I, I don't know if they were spoken to about it or not. I, I know in the past, there has been.
We've had to because the way the alfalfa was grown out over the sidewalk.
Actually, Ty mentioned, we can, we can enforce that. Good point, Tony. Are any other comments?
Not for me, mayor.
I, I just, I just know the north side uh, had their recycle emptied and it didn't happen over here. And I happened to go to your ward Sunday. Oh, my word. I thought that was the first week in June. I don't know anything about it. Sorry.
I know. Half my street's still out from last Wednesday. Thought they were gonna get picked up. It didn't. And I've heard about it.
But, but.
There was some confusion.
Tracy, that's gonna happen this week. Yeah, so it, it, I, I, I didn't know what to tell anybody. I says, well, mine got picked up.
Went over well.
That's the first time the north end of the city got anything.
So. You gotta be honest, I made a phone call to Morgan City and said, what's up? And Tracy says, oh, it's, it's, it's staggered.
Yeah.
You, you're, you're next week, so.
So that, that will be probably solved this, this week.
In a month, it'll all be.
But, but then, uh, yeah, we won't go there. Okay, is there any more from the council? In Ty?
Oh, your, your May thirty-first Front Street Extravaganza.
Front Street Festival.
What, what festival? There you go. But I thought it was great. It was quite fun. Well-attended, a lot of people, so. Thank you.
I think the upcoming.
Chamber Commerce and.
Our show's gonna be big.
It wasn't the chamber, it was the, um, Preservation Society.
Was it? Okay.
The ones that had the t-shirts on.
Yeah. But yeah, it was a good event.
Yeah.
They did a good job.
Okay, Ty.
So just a couple of things, um, just so you know, one, one item that's going to a planning commission is our ADU ordinance. So when we did the ADU ordinance, we did it by, um, zone and not lot size. So they just wanna, the staff's looking at that, just getting that cleaned up a little bit. So if you're in an R one-ten zone, but you own an acre of ground, we've said you, you're in the wrong zone or whatnot, like, so we, we went off a minimum lot size, but there's a lot of places that have larger than the minimum, right? That the ADU could, could function in, but, uh. Right? The, the ADU could, could function in, but, uh. Right? So, anyway, just kind of cleaning that up and making it apply to lot sizes instead of just what zone you're in. And then some other cleanup stuff. So we'll see how the planning commission, they'll, they'll have to forward a recommendation to us, but that's coming up on their. Their agenda, just FYI. So if you're paying attention to the. Then out here on the, the, our West Young Street project. I can't remember if I, um, in my last update, let you know that we're, we kind of paused and we're doing water lines. So we had a water line break, not on that road, but on an adjacent road and. When they dug that up, it was like a sixty-year-old. Water service. And, uh, so we went down and figured out how many of those still exist on that road. So we're going to get those replaced before we finish that road project. So we're not cutting into the. Brand new road. So, most of them are only twenty years old, which is. Good, but there's still a lot of. Twenty, I can't remember how many we're, we're looking at, but anyway, that, that added to our project, it'll come out of the water. Water budget, but it includes, um, new lines and then also moving the meters into the new park strip that we're creating. Cause we have a really wide right of way. And still leaving the meters clear out in no man's land, we're going to bring those, those in and put them in the park strip. So just a little, little delay, but probably a good move in the long term, to get that done. And, uh, I don't think I ever did report back, but we, the graffiti under the bridges have been painted. Painted over, that was part of the high school. Project, we, we took a dozen kids over and.
You did report that to us.
Did I? Okay. For the duplication. And then. We're also just looking at installing cameras over there, so we're, we're getting a bit on that right now. It's kind of. Hard with the poles that we have, the streetlight poles are more decorative than. Not as easy to mount things to, but it requires some internet and, and stuff like that, but we are working on the. Long-term deterrent thing, so just like everything else, why can't we have nice things for? We're working on it. So those are my. My updates for now and then I'll still send out an email reminder or email updates every once in a while.
Okay, any, any more discussion? If not, we'll, uh. We'll close this meeting and, uh. Move into a closed session.
Do you want me to make a motion, mayor? I'll make a motion that we go into a closed session.
I'll second that, mayor.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need to say what for?
Oh. Discuss the sale of real property, including any form of water right or water shares and for reasonable im- imminent litigation.
Want to second that?
I'll still second that, you bet.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you can make it back to your other meeting on your lawn.
Yeah, anybody else?
Me and her.
Congratulations.
Eric, Eric quit and Condi's sister ended coming to do it.
That's my sister. My youngest sister.
That is?
Yep, she'll be taking my spot.
Good. Didn't have to campaign. Wonderful.
The unfortunate part is.
I didn't know that was your sister.
Yeah, my youngest.
That's good.